Okay, the time is now seven o'clock. I'd like to call the Dalton Select Board meeting to order...
Recording in progress.
Mr. Stroud, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We could have a roll call.
Buck Stroud?
Here.
John Boyle?
Here.
Bud Bishop on Zoom?
Yeah, he's here. Sleeping, brother.
Bob, you here?
Yes.
I do, yeah.
Dan Scherber, Chair this evening?
Here.
And Tom Hutchison, Town Manager?
Here.
Thank you very much. This is the time for the public address of the board. On any item listed on the meeting agenda or on any issue or matter of the town, if you intend an address in the board at this time, we ask that you do the following. Please identify yourself by name, address, or the company and institution you represent. The public address to the board segment will last no longer than thirty minutes. Please make your comments concise. Try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. The chair or their designee may answer questions on procedural matters. Please be cordial and respectful of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized when the board discusses an agenda item, please make the request at this time. The board chair may grant the request. We are meeting in person to make this meeting available via Zoom for the convenience of the public. Since we are meeting in person, we will not be responsible for any technical difficulties. So if you would like to be sure of participating, please attend in person. Anyone have anything to say during this comment period or address an agenda item? Yes, sir.
Senator Zierwitz?
Sure thing. Thank you.
David Wosilowski, 191 Orchard Road. I'm aware that there's, and I've sent you guys some emails, and I won't go through all the details again. I'm aware that there is a huge or pretty significant reconstruction project going on along Orchard Road. I'm a resident there, and that the neighborhoods are going to be affected. And it's not only to just cover the, you know, re- asphalt the road, but to, you know, tear it all up and redo the drainage system and such. And I'm wondering what kind of public input it's going to have to this project regarding the timing and disruption and everything. And my proposal is to have some kind of a regular meeting for the town, the part of the town that's included over there to be able to give feedback as to what the expectations are when it gets fixed, when it is fixed. So you can help participate in the fix rather than complaining about it after it's done.
Okay. Thank you, David. So I would defer that to the Town Manager as well as the Department of Public Works Superintendent, Bud Hall. I don't know that we'll address any concerns or questions at this time, but your comment and your letter, your email is definitely taken into account. And I could see some future agenda items that would include either, starting with a presentation of what is being planned and potentially solicit input. But I don't know if you want to say anything else on it tonight.
Nothing to discuss tonight.
Okay, so future agenda item?
Yeah.
In the next month or so and notify...
In that area, can you notify specifically this is happening? And that their input is important.
Okay.
I didn't expect anything happened tonight. I just wanted to start the conversation.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, David.
Thanks to John Boyle for having me.
As I pointed out today, Bud's well aware of this. Yes, there are little issues that we could invite you on at this point. But until a general contractor there is selected and meets with the road superintendent after the bidding process, then they will set the tone for what happens on the road as is regarding traffic, delays, detours, blocked off streets. All that can happen. And then by that time, Bud will have this information and he, I'm certain, will be able to present it to us or just address the neighborhood as easy as that.
Okay.
We just, we would like to understand what the expectations are because there are flooding issues. And I, I don't want to be judgmental, but I'm willing to guess that a lot of people here don't understand where the, specifically where the flood are happening in that areas. The property across the street probably goes underwater and it's six and 12 inches of Luciers. I don't know if you're familiar with them. And the Holiday Farms field back there, those people and peas that live on Peas End must get pretty concerned about the fact that there are piles up there who comes over that little farm.
Okay. Well, thank you, David, for the comments and the email to the board. And we'll definitely take it up in a future meeting and try to do our best to notify residents of the agenda item when it comes up.
Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anything else on this?
Yes, as you say, we might have a meeting that's not necessarily on the Select Board agenda, just strictly devoted to addressing the concerns of the people.
Potentially, yes.
Just have a simple meeting.
I'll put that, I'll put this on the agenda, a future agenda for such discussion.
Yes, that sounds great.
There you go.
Perfect. All right, anyone else, any comments during this period or on any agenda items? Okay. Moving on to appointment ratifications.
I will defer to the ADA Coordinator, Alyssa Machinow, for this appointment.
Yes, John Currow, committee interest, or it was in your folder. He has shown interest in the ADA Committee. He lives, he's not here tonight. He lives close by, but he works in Tidfield Housing. He has experience with the rules and regulations. And this appointment will fill the ADA Committee, so.
Excellent. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we appoint John Currow to the ADA Committee effective March 19, 2024 through June 30 of 2024.
Say it.
Excellent. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carries. All right, next up, we have the Dalton Carnival from Thursday, May 30, 2024, through Sunday, June 2, 2024. And I believe we have Executive Director of the CRA, Allison Peters, here to discuss.
So first, I want to apologize. We put the wrong date in the letter. It should be June 6 through the 9.
Okay.
So we were sending a big letter out. I'm sorry.
Before you, yeah, I get confused too myself when you said Thursday in here. Didn't traditionally the carnival open on Wednesday?
It used to be we did Wednesdays.
Now it starts on Thursday?
Yeah.
And what day will that be?
June 6.
Did you?
June 6 through June 9?
Right.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we will send new letters. We did send letters with the incorrect date to all your departments.
Okay.
So we will, we'll take care of that. But as we mentioned, the carnival will be Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. We will have fireworks on Friday night and Saturday night. We will be working with the police department regarding, you know, what we need for coverage for traffic and whatnot for grounds. We will have the EMTs there.
Yeah, firefighters, EMTs will do it.
Again, we'll have vendors that are, you know, nonprofit organizations in our community. They'll be in that room to sell their goods and make a little money for their nonprofit. We're using the same company, Fennel's. They've been doing it with us for twenty years.
Excellent.
And we always have good success with them.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the Dalton Carnival from June 6 through June 9. Attention, find meeting with all the department heads and their approval.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Say it.
All right, motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Mr. Bishop, anything?
Nope.
Okay. All right, hearing none, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Council on Aging Grant Acceptances. There's three of them. I don't know if you want to give any background or just...
Yes, just a little bit. The first two are the sort of normal annual grants. The Formula Grant comes directly from the state, as does, well, and then there's the Mass Council on Aging Supplement of $150 to that $28,000 grant from the state. So those two are, they kind of go together. Then the third one is actually new this year and very exciting. $50,393 grant for technology that will enable seniors to have programs broadcast to their homes. It also includes some loaner laptops. So we're hoping to be able to expand the offerings of the senior center to people who may be homebound or may not be able to get out for some period of time. So that's a great step forward in accessibility. And we really look forward to testing it out.
Excellent.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we accept the following grants on behalf of the Dalton Council on Aging. Formula Grant in the amount of $28,404. The MCOA supplement to Formula Grant, $150. And the EOEA hybrid programming grant in the amount of $50,393.
Say it.
All right, motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Motion passes. Thank you, Bob. Okay, next up, we have the request for ARPA funds for property appraisals.
Yes, and I'm, anyway, sorry that I have to come asking for ARPA funds. These are the three parcels in question. The first one is on Husatonic Street. And that is a potential easement, which...
You given or I was saying?
These are all different. Okay. Yeah.
So what are you giving us here?
I'm giving you three maps.
The first one related to...
The first one is Husatonic Street. This is the...
The LP items?
This is the first Orchard Street one. And that's the one we'll be talking about here. Oh, I'm sorry, no. That's the one we'll be talking about, the one on the left. And the second sheet. And then in the third sheet is the second Orchard Street easement at the top.
Okay.
So what we don't have is any fund in which we can spend money to get these parcels appraised. And unless the owners agree to donate the easements to the town, we have to get them appraised and pay for fair market value. The first parcel, the Husatonic Street parcel, we already know the owner is not interested in donating. And the second two parcels for Orchard Street, I do have letters out to the residents asking whether they would be interested in donating. I don't know the answer to that, but I may know it tomorrow or this week. I'm hoping to. And then I can, as soon as I know that, I can call the appraiser and pull the plug for, pull the trigger for getting the, getting the parcels appraised. They say it's going to take five to six weeks. I'm hoping it takes four to five. It's a pretty tight timeline for getting the amount of money onto the motions and explanation sheet for town meeting. And we won't have the figures until then either. But for due diligence and in order to get started, I thought I would ask at this Select Board meeting so we can get going this week if we have the information from the residents.
So it's $5,000 out of the ARPA fund you're asking for?
Well, it's $7,500, or $2,500 apiece for the appraisals.
Okay, I see what you mean. Two for $2,500 on Orchard Road and one for $2,500 on...
And the only figure I've heard is a very informal figure of $15,000 potential for the cost of the easement on Husatonic. I have not heard anything about the cost of the easements for Orchard Road.
Is $2,500 a reasonable and customary fee per appraisal?
Well, we just had one done on the board with the parcel, and that's pretty much what it was per parcel for that as well.
That was a large parcel?
It was actually $6,500 for the three parcels together. So definitely within the ballpark.
Okay.
Well, if we approve this, what will be the balance in the ARPA funds?
Well, we have now at least $120,000 in it. So this quality substantial amount of money will leave a much more substantial amount of money in the ARPA fund.
Who already owns a little property on Orchard Road?
One is Amy Musanti. She owns the corner lot on Orchard Road and North Street. And the other is a Louise Frankenberg, who orders the stream, Husatonic, the east branch, as it goes under...
Don't lay the river.
River.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the following utilization of ARPA funds. $2,500 for the Husatonic Street parcel and $5,000 for the two parcels on Orchard Street.
Say it.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Mr. Bishop, any comments?
No, I'm good with that, Dan.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm good.
None opposed, motion carries. Okay. Next up, we have FY '25 budgets, number 310, CDRSD, and any other items?
Yes, now, we emailed you today. I don't know whether you got it or not. We emailed you the operating transportation and capital figures along with the entire CDRSD budget. And the good news is that the operating budget came down quite substantially, almost $100,000. And that's just, that's just wonderful news for the budget as a whole, which I'll go into later in the meeting. But the operating budget is now set at $8,907,993. The transportation budget is the same as the preliminary budget, which was $300,101. And the capital budget is also the same as it was in the preliminary budget, So the only change was in the operating budget, but it was quite a substantial change. So that ends up with a total rise of 1.96% for these three budgets.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's all three budgets combined.
That's the percentage change.
Oh, I think that's what we asked for, keep it under 2%.
Well, we asked to keep it under 2.5.
2.5.
Oh, wow.
Considerably under that.
Now, how does that translate into the tax rate?
Well, I will, how about I cover that when we go to the total budget here?
That sounds good.
Yep.
Because there are some other more minor changes in the budget, but they still affect it.
Okay. Well, this is wonderful.
Yes.
I don't think we really need to discuss this. TA, thank you very much. Great work to the Central Berkshire Regional School District. I'm not sure what caused the decrease, but we'll welcome it.
It was down 1.5%. I was hoping for a 1% decrease and it was down 1.5% from the preliminary budget, preliminary operating budget.
Yeah, it was up near 3%.
Is it just revenue sources that offset?
I don't know how they, how they got the ELC then.
Okay. Check the minutes out from their last meeting, I suppose. Okay. So, under budgets, Tom, we have any other items? Is there anything you want to cover in that bullet point or...
Yes.
Okay.
This is, this is where I will cover that other information. First, I have a new sheet for proposed money articles. We've taken several off the list. We have not added any. I think it's just three then.
And so is this the same as what's in our packet or is it different?
This has changed today.
Well, here's this one.
The only item that's changed today is under Buildings, the engineering for loose section reinforcement. That's a, that's an item, we had anticipated that at $25,000, but we got a quote for almost $40,000, $39 and change. So that's what, that's the new item on this particular budget, and I put it in bold. Also, we do not yet have figures for the Orchard Street easements or, in fact, the easement for the Husatonic Street property, which is under the, the last item under the Town Manager. That's, that is estimated at $15,000, but that's a very informal figure. So those two items still need final figures. But we took out the Town Planner's Brownfield's payment requirement because we're not ready to move forward with that project. And we did take out the skate park because that was also not ready for moving forward.
Yeah.
And we moved the request for the paver from this, from this money article, from free cash to a capital stabilization, it being really a piece of capital equipment and best paid for out of the capital stabilization account if the town wants to pay for it. There is some question as to whether we still need a 2/3 vote to take money out of special stabilization funds and whether our capital stabilization fund qualifies as a special stabilization fund. It's clear that a 2/3 vote is still needed for taking money out of general stabilization. But I believe all our other stabilization funds would be called special stabilization funds. And one of the municipal modernization acts recently made the bar for taking money out of those funds a simple majority rather than a 2/3 vote.
Okay.
I think that's, oh, yeah, we also, I think there was something we took out of the Buildings Section 2, though I may have taken it out last time.
Yeah, it's not in this one, so I think you may have removed it before.
And, yeah, so this has been cut back considerably. At one point, the free cash usage was over $1.4 million. Now it's just over $1.3 million, $1,316.
Yeah.
But we still don't know what free cash actually is.
We, Sandy submitted a free cash proposal to the state for certification.
Yeah, I saw that.
And we have not gotten it certified yet.
But we're in the ballpark.
I anticipate it will be greater than 2.1 million.
Really?
Yes, that's the figure I've been using to estimate this.
2.18?
And I've been indicating, and it's been indicated to me that it will be more than that.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Oh, I was also going to mention some of the questions Mr. Boyle was asking earlier. With the current budget, and, you know, the tax rate is difficult to talk about now because it involves property valuations, which were not finalized until the fall. So if property values did not go up at all, if they were flat, this budget would result in a rise in the, in the tax rate of about 49 cents. So 1750. That would be a 2.9% rise to the average tax bill or $157. It also represents some positive direction in our excess levy capacity. We would be starting to build that back up again. And again, that's due to the $150,000 drop in the school operating budget. So that's, that's extremely good news, I think.
Okay. That's positive. Any questions on the money articles?
It's right here? Yeah, one question, or not, of course, in the category. Where is it? Down here. Third category down, DPW. Maybe it's a clear, a lot of the confusion is raging through the community. It's three cars, what Mr. Hall has recommended for the proposed Orchard Street sidewalk. $100,000. That's for the blacktop sidewalk. Now, that is a really good price. If we go to concrete, and I repeat this, it will be close to $200,000.
That's just with the engineering, just to say.
Just for the engineering?
That was just a wild guess. That's just a number that's there at the moment. There, some of that's being put together now. That was what Tom put for a number, 10% of what we got from the grant for the sidewalk.
Oh, but there is an advantage to the town to not having to, to not doing it at the same time as the Orchard Street project, right?
Okay, let's clarify. Then this $100,000 here isn't for a sidewalk?
Right, it's for the engineering for the sidewalk and, and...
Wait a minute. You got $100,000 engineering, 10% of the $1 million grant? Wait a minute, the two aren't together.
It's, it won't be that much. It's not going to be that much because Tom just used 10% because it's like a rule of engineering for...
Okay.
But most of this was, this, the trouble, not trouble this project, this project started in 2019.
Yeah.
I wasn't even here.
Yeah.
This, I designed then, and we just pretty much refreshed it since we got the grant.
So that's $100,000, it's 10% for overall engineering.
Yeah.
Basically at Orchard Road.
Yeah.
Not for the sidewalk.
All right. Overall engineer.
Hey, all right. So we clarified, excuse me, just so we clarified that point, that I was in error speaking of the cost of blacktop versus concrete.
Can I direct an answer to this?
Yes, sure thing.
The point of the neighborhood, are we going to have that full sidewalk, the concrete sidewalks on our, on our yards? And how are they going to be installed and what are they going to look like? And what is the purpose of that? And who's going to maintain them when they get on? Have we, like, had some discussion about that?
Certainly.
Before the machines start rolling up in our yards?
Absolutely. And, you know, we have committed to future meetings and agenda items on the Select Board agenda. Already for that, so I'm not sure how much more I can say about the matter at the moment, to be honest with you.
But one important thing I can say, Dave, you personally, I think Bud and I in many conversations have pretty much agreed that the sidewalk building belongs on the east side of Orchard Street, Orchard Road. Okay? So that doesn't bother almost any of the houses. There's a couple down towards the river, and then as you go up towards the golf course, there's the Dakota Country Club. And it's, as Bud has pointed out, it might be a tight squeeze at the top. But then go down and meet the sidewalk at Old Orchard Road. It just primarily benefits the students who walk to the schools in that area.
Okay.
Okay? Good question.
One suggestion, Mr. Hutchison, is just make sure that this money article, I know you, we're going to have them all grouped together and we're going to move into... just make sure that this money article, I know you, we're going to have them all grouped together and we're going to move into the warrant in a moment. Make sure that it's clear that it's for the engineering and it's not for the actual replacement of sidewalks, just so that people are clear that that's not what they're voting on.
Right, and, uh, I will admit to some confusion on that part myself.
Okay. All right.
Because there's basically two separate projects. One, the grant money for the construction. And the sidewalk being funded by the town.
Yes.
And engineering.
Yes. And I just wanted to recognize, um, some further information that, uh, Highway Superintendent Bud Hall presented regarding the money article request for the new Ford F-550 to replace the 2014, uh, the current 2014 F-550. There's a substantial, uh, list of, um, repairs, um, that have been needed for that truck. And it had been out of service as well. But, uh, I think it's clear, uh, based on the evidence provided, that it's ready for replacement, and I have no further comments on that.
Bud, does it have any trading value at all?
Yeah, it's, it's to be traded in, we'll keep it for, it's not worth keeping it for us.
Yeah, right.
I think it's, it's fifteen thousand under what, any estimate?
Really? That much?
Yeah.
Wow. I thought you were going to say fifteen hundred. Good work.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. All right, uh, we ready to move into annual town meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
We have, um, uh, some replacement paper for you for the warrant that's in your,
Okay.
uh, folders. That was what I sent off to town council.
Yep.
Uh, we have first a redlined version of that, which is printed in black and white.
Okay.
And, uh, secondly, my clean, accepted version of all those, uh, proposed changes. And he had some proposed changes in language to make the money articles clearer, uh, so that people understood what they were actually for. And I, uh, not only took all of his examples, but I, I threw in a few extra words for some of the other items. That said, um, I still, say, Alyssa, could I have a couple of those?
Yes, yes, you can. Thank you.
I have not clarified the, uh, the sidewalk money article, uh, which is not the sidewalk money article, it's the Orchard Street engineering,
Okay.
uh, article on that.
All right.
So that would still have to be, uh, a stricken sidewalk and destruction, and having that just be Orchard Street engineering.
And did you, uh, overall accept the redline edits, and that's what's reflected in the second document?
Yes, yes, all of, all of town council's changes were accepted.
Okay, all right.
Uh, I have, yes.
Okay.
I think that, and that's, that's fine. Uh, again, I, I added a few more clarifying words to the, uh, to the money articles than he had,
Hey.
than he had suggested. He, his point was to make it abundantly clear what was being voted on.
Yes.
So locations, um, purposes.
Absolutely.
That, that sort of thing.
Um, I'll just note that Article One is the citizen's petition regarding the, uh, proposed bylaw changes that would affect, uh, the towns, uh, I guess, how we construct our sidewalks, uh, in town. And, um, I just want to note, you know, we are leaving the sidewalk paver request on the money article as well. Uh, but depending on the outcome of that vote, I'm not sure, um, we can still vote to, uh, procure that piece of equipment, uh, for roadwork too. But I don't know if you have any comments on that, or, uh, Mr. Hall, I guess he left him?
Uh, I have no comments on that at this point.
Well, certainly be discussion at town meeting and, and let the voters decide how they want to, uh, address that, um, depending on the outcome of that vote.
Yes, and I, and again, I did take that from the Article Seventeen, which is supposed to be all from free cash, and put it in Article Sixteen, which is moving things from the capital stabilization fund.
Oh, yes, that's right. Put it into Sixteen, yes, capital stabilization, okay.
And, and I, I will also say that, um, I would be more than open if we get an excess of free cash to putting more money in the stabilization funds from free cash.
Yeah.
Especially replenishing the sewer stabilization fund, which we dipped into and have not yet fully replaced.
Okay.
And also the capital stabilization fund, in, in particular.
We do have one, one more meeting this month, don't we?
Next week.
Yes.
Yes, and, and, uh, you know, I, I do have one, uh, that wording change for Orchard Road in Article Seventeen. But I would urge you all to look through this carefully.
Yes. Question?
Yeah.
Are you expecting, and I know we discussed this last week, but I would just want to get clarity. It says consideration for signing warrant. You expect that we'll sign it tonight or wait until another edit, round of edits takes place?
I, I need to clarify the, uh, the Orchard Road,
Yeah, okay.
item. So unfortunately, I don't think that will be possible, but, and,
But next week?
What that does is it, is it stops further proposals for, for putting things on, you know, officially.
Yeah.
Uh, I've been telling people that it's, it's closed for some time because there's enough here for you all to deal with without taking up something new.
No question.
At this point, but.
Okay.
And I also did include, I, I have an email out to the Central Berkshire Regional School District. I have included the entire agreement,
I see that.
in this warrant. We were sent today a proposed warrant article that simply referred to an agreement that was on file at the district office. And I didn't think that was sufficiently transparent.
A question I have regarding that, Thomas, who's going to present that at the meeting?
I don't know, at this point.
We don't want to read the whole agreement.
No, no, we, we want, there will be a motion to waive the reading.
Okay.
And well, the, the motions will be different from the article. The motions are always,
Yes, yes.
They have the money and the source and all of that. Uh, however, I thought if we, you know, we're getting this out two weeks ahead of time, or that's our, that's our goal, is to have it out two weeks before town meeting, so people will have a chance to actually read it.
Yeah.
And they may have questions about it, so that was, that was my intent.
Okay.
Uh, I, also speaking with town council, or emailing the town council, he said that if we did use the truncated version that Central Berkshire provided, we should have copies for everyone at the meeting anyway. And I thought, rather than being presented with a rather lengthy legal document at the meeting, that it would be much better to get the proposal out to people ahead of time so they felt that they could inform themselves fully if they wanted to.
Okay. I don't really have any objection to that, but we certainly have more time to review, discuss, and, um, take a vote at the next meeting and hopefully sign the warrant.
Uh, yes, um, next week I would consider the, the, the latest date that we would want to sign the warrant. We do have to send it out for printing. And, uh, the warrant itself doesn't make that long, because we do it with the town report. And of course, then we have to schedule, uh, stuffing the town report
Sure.
and distributing it two weeks before town meeting. So that's, the work backwards with that timeline.
Will free cash be certified, uh, in time for our next meeting a week from today? Do you know?
Based on past experience, it will be.
Okay.
I can't,
Yeah, I understand. So you expect it to be?
But, they are getting a lot of them these days.
Okay.
Uh, but sometimes they come relatively quickly.
Tom, see in the back, the part regarding, uh, regional school district, there's a signature page.
Yes.
Now, do all these people that are mentioned here, the chairman of the board, select board of Covington, all have to sign our warrant? Or they just have to sign this section?
No, they'll, they'll sign the original agreement.
Our signatures are back here. If you flip it one more. Flip it one more to the very end. Look back, last page in the back. You flip that, that last page.
Okay.
So here's the warrant signatures.
They sign over here, and then we sign here?
Yeah.
All right. Do they have to sign first?
No.
Just to see the example.
The, the towns will be signing an original copy of it.
Okay.
This is to approve the form and content of that original copy. Okay?
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Quick, quick question? Uh, and this is more of a question for Tom, but i- i- is it possible that we could, as the town, have like a detailed, justification, description for each warrant item as opposed to just the warrant item? Is there a way that we could get like a couple paragraphs to support, uh, why the town should vote on each one?
We always put out, along with the warrant, or not with it, but soon after it, a motions and explanations document.
Okay.
So there's a motion which includes a specific amount of money and the source that that money is coming from, as well as having an appropriately long and short description of the reason for that warrant or,
Okay. So as an example for some of the capital expenditures, it'll say, you know, we've looked into this and discovered this justifies the capital expense in this area because otherwise it's good money after bad, or, you know, or,
Yeah, that sort of thing. I can, I can send you, uh, last year's version if you send me an email.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll review this further and hopefully be able to, uh, vote and sign next meeting a week from today. Uh, there was a couple of other items on the annual town meeting agenda for tonight. Review items, proposed money articles, we did that under budgets. And then review major capital projects and DPW and PD capital plans. Now, you presented a document, I think it was the last meeting.
Yes, uh, there's, there's actually an addition. We have, uh, we, we got a, uh, at least the beginning of a police department capital plan, which we now have, together with the highway capital plan. Now, I have not yet, um, brought the two worksheets together so that they total,
Okay.
under that bottom section on the first page, but I did want to show some progress
Yes.
towards that, uh, kind of regular capital plan.
Yeah, yeah.
As, as opposed to the capital projects. See, it's, it's, the, the capital projects, right now, are, a lot of them are catch-up. And a lot of them are dreaming. And, um,
Okay.
Some of them are, are somewhere in between. But in general, what I have is the capital projects are things that are not regularly scheduled.
Yeah.
And for equipment and vehicles, really, is what the capital plan is covering at this point. And we can't put them together into one document at some point. But I think in terms of keeping the data together, it makes sense to cover them differently at this point.
Yeah, I think equipment versus capital improvements, you know, keeping those separate makes sense. Well, this is very clear. I mean, we can see what we are up against in these two, which are the largest, uh, budget departments in the town. Is that correct?
Yes.
We've made significant investments, you know, recently, but those, you know, obviously will, um, will be good for at least five years in most cases. So it's not a lot of, uh, heavy lifting when you're looking at the next four years for police department. Maybe a little bit more on the highway department, but, um, it's nice to have the document that lays out, uh, the service life for each piece of equipment and the estimated replacement cost in the year that we would conceivably replace the equipment. And then this front page here is the capital projects. Some of which we're going to do this year.
And some of which may never get done.
Well, we'll see. I mean, it all depends, but it is nice to have them on the list.
Yes.
And I know the numbers are, are guestimates.
It's the universe of possible projects that I know of at this point.
And just for everyone's benefit, we can put some of these, uh, some of these, uh, priority projects, sewer maintenance, linings, that's something we probably will need to do, not.
Well, we're, we're doing a fair amount of that with the, uh, Influen Infiltration,
Yeah.
uh, rehabilitation project right now. Matter of fact, Bud and I were at a meeting today where we saw some of the closed circuit TV footage of, uh, the work that's being done.
Yeah, so $10 million as just a placeholder figure for that. Major sidewalk initiative, 7.5 million, completely replace all concrete sidewalks. Would that be with concrete or with asphalt?
That's with concrete.
Okay.
So that, that's a high figure.
Yeah.
Um, and again, that's not meant to be spent in one year.
I understand.
But if it were, if it were, um, borrowed so that we could do it over, over ten years, we, we probably wouldn't actually borrow it all once, but that's what the authorization would be for.
For. Uh, major road initiative, Street Scan estimated that to be around $20 million, so with inflation, 25 million. Police Station is on the list here, 20 million, also needs site procurement. Husatonic Street Bridge, it's functionally obsolete, 30 million, so not to say that that's what we're planning on doing, anytime soon, but it is on the list of potentially desired capital projects, um, in the coming 10 years or maybe more. We'll see.
I just might point out, in the bridge on Husatonic Street, right down here, it's not functionally in, what'd you say?
Yeah, I guess.
Debt, debt money is being supposed for the possibility of putting a, uh, cantalivered section on the bridge. So peo- the pedestrians could walk outside of the bridge thoroughfare.
Absolutely.
But the cost of doing that, back when the road project was initiated, was $5 million then. So it's easily $10 million now. So it's kind of, probably not going to happen. But it is a dangerous situation. But the bridge is structurally sound.
Yeah, so I didn't mean to state that, uh,
Send a panic to the community.
Yeah, I don't want to send a panic. Uh, functionally, though, it's not functioning for pedestrians.
No, it is not functioning.
So I think that's, that's the clarifying point there. Thank you. Um, I don't have anything else on this matter. Anyone else on the board have anything else to say about the, uh, long-term capital planning? Okay. Any other items on this agenda item? No?
Uh, not for me.
Okay. Moving on to town manager update. Anything for us today?
Uh, not really, uh, not, since I, I gave it last week.
Yeah.
I've been working mostly on, on the things on this agenda. Um, I do want to stress that we do have several job openings in town at this point. And, uh,
Has those been posted to, um, to whatever Indeed or whatever website we use to post jobs?
Where do we post, Alyssa?
Um, as of today, they're posted to the town website, Indeed, and Mass Hire, um, which are all free together, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Future agenda items. Well, we certainly discussed one today, and that'd be the Orchard Road project. Uh, so I think to start, uh, we can place on the agenda for the board to consider how, uh, we may want to engage with residents regarding the project.
Sure.
Start there as a discussion. Start there as a discussion, um, so maybe that can be put on, I, I'd prefer that it not necessarily be on, on next week's agenda, but I'd say in April would be appropriate.
Yeah, definitely. I think Bud would say he's a little time to get, well, we, he doesn't know exactly where we're going yet either because it hasn't gone out to bid.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a big bid accepted, so a lot of issues such as, uh, traffic management, as I said, detours, uh, construction digging up in front of your house, that's probably gonna happen.
The school is gonna be a mess.
Yeah. Yeah, yep, so there's gonna be a lot of issues to deal with, uh, it's been my experience in our last two major projects that the companies hired their own, uh, uh, traffic directors or flag people and, uh, that seemed to work out fairly well on Housatonic Street because they were part of a work crew and, uh, worked along with the equipment and kept things flowing and knew what was gonna happen from day to day in terms of, hey, they were gonna dig in front of Dave's house and make a goddamn mess. Yeah, yeah, an excavator waking you up.
Either the eighth, uh, or the twenty-second, those, those are the two meeting dates in April.
Is the twenty-second, is that a holiday? What'd you say?
I've got a key. Yeah, I do not have that as a holiday here.
Anybody know?
I believe the twenty-second is Patriot Day, isn't it?
Yeah.
Oh, you know what, I have the federal holidays only on my calendar, so, so. I mean, I'd be fine with it on the eighth, that's in two weeks.
Yeah, well, go ahead with that and be cognizant of the twenty-second may be.
Actually, it's Monday, April fifteenth.
Oh.
So we'll have every twenty-second.
Yep, so we stay with it.
So let's get it on to the fifteenth.
Yeah, stay with the twenty-second.
Eighth through the twenty-second.
Oh, the fifteenth is Patriots, thank you.
I thought it might be twenty, I thought it might be twenty-second.
Uh, I'm fine with the eighth, if everyone else is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do they have a schedule of that?
Any other future agenda items?
That was for the Orchard Road.
Yeah. Just a conversation about, uh, how we wanna engage with residents, um, and communicating about the project and getting their, you know, input, feedback.
Yeah, um, I think the, the point is well made that until the project is, is bid successfully, we, we won't have a start date for the project.
So I just wanna clarify, we're not having a meeting that night with the neighbors?
Nope, no, no.
We are gonna have a discussion about how we wanna go forward.
Correct. That's it, what kind of format? Will it be a select board meeting, will it instead be just a community meeting?
By, by that date, we might know when it's going out to bid, which is coming along pretty soon, right, Tom?
I don't know that, well, yeah, we could know.
Well, that's an important factor, having, you know, the, if we have a meeting with the neighborhood to have the, uh, representative of the general contractor be here, he can explain what's gonna happen in detail.
Yeah, we will need the easements.
Yeah.
So, uh, but I think, you know, this is a good start.
Yeah.
Getting the money for the appraisals, so.
Okay, well, uh, we could put it on the twenty-second then to give us a little more time to gather more information.
Yeah.
Does that sound fair?
And, you know, it would be fairly easy for us to set up a webpage for updates as well.
Okay, so let's put it on the agenda for April twenty-second if there's no objection. Does that sound good?
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Any other future agenda items? Okay, hearing none, seeing none, items not anticipated forty-eight hours before the meeting? I have none. No one else? Remarks of the select board? Any special remarks from members of the select board? Bob, do you have anything?
I'm, I'm good, Dan.
Okay, thank you. All right, announcements, annual car permits, bag stickers and recycling only car permits are available for purchase at the transfer station and on the town's website. There are numerous committees and boards with vacancies, please see the town website for more information or reach out to the town manager's office. The Dalton Housing Authority has one vacancy on their board, must be a Dalton resident, please contact Sue Gregory at six eight four two four nine three for more information. Is your electricity bill too high? The town has contracted with Colonial Power to provide an electricity plan for town residents that takes advantage of joining with other communities to have a larger customer base for negotiations, which has resulted in prices that are lower than current ever sourced prices. Please note, this may not always be the case. For more detail or to opt in or opt out, visit the town's website or call the town manager's office. The Dalton Police Department would like to remind residents of the winter parking ban, which is in effect from November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three through April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. There will be no parking allowed on streets between these dates and between the hours. There will be no parking allowed on the streets between these dates and between the hours of one AM and six AM. The Department of Public Works would like to remind residents to remove basketball hoops in the roadway, as well as ones that hang over the roadway between the dates of November first, twenty twenty-three and April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. The town of Dalton currently has four job opportunities, part-time, uh, council and aging van driver, DPW administrative assistant, DPW equipment operator, assistant tax collector. Please visit the town's website or contact town manager's office at four one three six eight four six one one one, extension two zero two for more information. Next meeting is scheduled to take place on Monday, March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four at seven PM at the senior center with an option for remote participa- participation, excuse me, with that may have a motion to adjourn.
Some moves.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you Dalton and good night. Thank you, Bob.